Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning. Welcome to the Commissioners' meeting this morning. I want to welcome everybody that's here inside the boardroom. Everybody that's up there virtual, that are listening or tuning into the meeting this morning. I want to welcome everybody. We will have a closed session this morning, approximately eight thirty. So that will be coming up at eight thirty. And we'll start off when we out call the meeting to order this morning. So a prayer by Commissioner Bardwell, pledge allegiance by Commissioner Cook, the roll call by Matt Fretting. We will have a brief public comment at the beginning of the meeting for the agenda items. And we will have another brief public comment at the end of the meeting where you can address the board. So with that being said, who else wants to grant us a prayer?
Much to be thankful and grateful for this morning. Holy Father, as we come to you this morning, we want to give praise and honor and glorify your name. We thank you for your renewed mercy and grace. It's promised in your word for each day that you give us. We lift our prayers to those in our national government, all that they do. We pray for righteousness and truth, we represent the people in the best interest. We have a hedge of protection around those individuals where there's much going on in the world, much evil. Pray the same for the state and local government. Pray for all those in law enforcement and service, especially those who've lost their lives. Protecting our liberties and our physical well-being, we have to be with their families, fathers, mothers, daughters. For we know the loss is great, but yet, Lord, sometimes we forget. We also pray for blessings in our own county for all those who respond to our citizens, who oversee their well-being. We just ask for your wisdom upon them. Again, ask for your mercy and grace and to be special with those who serve that have loved ones that are sick or suffering in any way, physically or spiritually. We just ask that you uplift them as we know that you can. Pray especially for those this morning who are mourning in their in their county who have lost their loved ones. We pray for the Pottens, we pray for the the Shrock's and the Kemp's, pray for the Astetners and others. Much had been lost. We just pray for your peace and grace and mercy and for each family. And this morning, we pray for she has for she is in good hands, but yet, Lord, we know that you hear all the prayers for her and her healing and bless her family, sustain them in every way of times of distress. But yet, you know, Lord, all things are in your hands and we trust in you. Once again, we pray for our county employees and their families, whatever their needs may be, for they serve the public. In times that are often difficult, but yet, Lord, we know that you guide us the best for the people that we serve. We ask that you bless the board with wisdom this morning and discernment. We ask that you guide us in all that we do and say in order that we although you've renewed our mercy and grace, we pray that we do the things today to bring you on and glory and shall we fail. And then outward deed, a mission, a commission. We just ask for the forgiveness through the precious blood of your son, shed on the cross. For the forgiveness of sins of mankind. We ask all these blessings, Jesus, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Commissioner Barrios. Commissioner Bardwell.
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Here.
Commissioner Luke.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
You have a quorum, you may proceed.
Thank you. Do we have anything to add to the agenda this morning or do you adopt the agenda?
My promotion that we adopt the agenda is presented.
Support.
The move by Commissioner Barrios and supported by Commissioner Luke to adopt the agenda as presented. Any more discussion? Here, none, all affairs say aye.
Aye.
Agenda has been adopted. Action on previous meeting minutes.
Chairman, move to adopt the meeting minutes from the October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. I'll support that.
The move by Commissioner Luke, supported by Commissioner Cook, to move to adopt the meeting minutes from October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Any more discussion? Here, none, all affairs say aye.
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. It's time now for a brief public comment. If anybody wants to address the board on what's on the agenda today, you can do that now. You adjust the board for what's on the agenda today. Anybody here in the boardroom or virtual that wants to address the board on the agenda items only, please? You can do that now. Let the record show, my clerk, that a public comment was offered and we had no participants this morning. We'll move on to consent agenda, which we do nothing on the consent agenda this morning. We right into the new business. The first thing I do business is discussion about Hurts Corner Road. Billy Paul, who will be presented.
I brought a book, but it's not for you guys. Don't get concerned. I just wanted to give you guys a brief update. November sixth, I was on the spoke at the Tuscula County Road Commission about not only Hurts Corner, but also a lot of the concerns that you guys had in the paper. And I want to see their response slash attitude slash urgency to the matter. And I just want to give you guys a brief low down and then also suit to some of the discussion that we had. And then where I think we should take it from there as a, as a community. Everybody knows what happens on Hurts Corner, but I also brought up some of the things that was really concerning me. And just to kind of bring you up to speed, right after the accident, my own township sent an email out saying, not only do we have a concern about Hurts Corner, but a few other things, can we get those addressed? And when I went to the meeting, they sent that email. Would have been the twenty-seventh of September. As of November sixth, when I went there, the email was answered the day before. So thirty-nine days it took for them to answer an email about concerns that Ellington Township had, not only about Hurts Corner, but also about some other things they had in their community. I do know that Wells Township also sent an email addressing concerns from some stuff in their township, plus Bevins and Hurts Corner, and also forty-six and Hurts Corner. And to that day when I was there, that email still hadn't been responded to. So it had been forty-plus days for them. There was also another township woman there that she was actually during the public comment asked that her emails be answered timely. She wanted a progress report on some stuff, stuff going on in her township and still hadn't got a response back. They did take the time to give her an update, but she said this is stuff that couldn't be covered in email. I'm bringing that to your attention because I think the lack of urgency and the lack of attention at the Road Commission is not just a one-off problem. It's not just the first time. So if it's just coming to light now, I'm sure it's, it's trickling down. I did talk about, I know Sheriff Robinson expressed his concerns and they gave him, they read it to me, a candid answer. It takes a study, it takes funding and it takes time. I'm paraphrasing, but it was in the newspaper. You guys can read it along with your guys' comments. Lieutenant Brian McCombs spoke here in the following days. He expressed the same concerns to the Road Commission, they gave him the same answer. WNEMTV five also got the same feedback. It takes time, it takes funding and it takes years. I don't think it takes years. I think you guys said, we need to cut the red tape. Well, I have a solution to cut the red tape because we, the people, are the red tape and this is our community. And if we see an urgency to protect our citizens, I think it should just be done. MDOT is not a jurisdictional authority. They are the standard of which we are to do stuff, the minimum standard. And we have to abide by their minimum standards. And so if we want to exceed their standards in our community, we have the right to do so at any time. I think giving the power back to the townships at any time, they know their community members a lot better than the farther we get away from that hierarchy. I also gave them some data, rumble strips. God bless my kids. They, they're not going to college right now, so they had a lot of time on their hands. And I said, look, do some research for me on rumble strips and different things. So the University of Iowa did a thing on rural intersections. Now, this is rural, this isn't in town, and rumble strips. Any form of rumble strip. And I asked the Road Commission, which should have some sort of knowledge, what do you think the reduction is in crashes? Just with a rumble strip? You don't have to answer. I don't expect you guys to know, maybe Bill. Twenty-eight percent. That's a lot, just a rumble strip. Now, then they also said blinking lights, any form of blinking light, whether it's across the intersection, whether it's a on the stop sign, any form of visual signal. Reduce fatal or injury crashes by ten point two percent. So we're looking at about thirty-eight point two percent. If Hurts Corner would have had that. Thirty-eight point two percent, whether or not my family would be alive. Now, the reason I'm bringing this up and I brought up the Road Commission is because this is not the first time Hurts Corner and other corners have been asked or addressed by the Road Commission. I do know in years past that my sister Casey reached out numerous times about Hurts Corner to the Road Commission, saying, hey, we need to do something there. And since then, I have other community members slash public officials come out and said they've complained. And so this has just gone unchecked and out of sight, out of mind. And that's where I think the approach of the, the county Road Commission is at. So I gave them that. And then I also gave them some solutions. I mean, I'm in the construction world, so my dad always said, never come to me with a problem without three solutions and only one of them can cost money. And so unfortunately, this was going to cost a little bit of money. But this is, I looked up the MDOT standards. I looked up what would be needed for each intersection. There's five, six, I'm sorry, five, five intersections, six problems that I addressed with the Road Commission. And gave them a budget. This is at retail. This is what I could find. I'm still trying to run a couple of businesses too, but this is what my kids have done the research on. I told them that we have to do it by MDOT standard, which we printed off. It's a billion pages. And, and we come up with a budget. Now, Hurts Corner and Deckerville, the minimum that is required that I think would help is install a solar red light on both sides and rumble strips. That's around a seventy, eight hundred dollar budget. Bevins and Hurts Corner, minimum rumble strips, that's forty-six hundred. Hurts Corner and forty-six rumble strips and a light, seventy, eight hundred again. Birch Run and M fifteen rumble strips, it's forty-six hundred. Irish and Birch Run, forty-six hundred, just rumble strips. And then I also asked for a progress report in Mayville on the speed limits. And they said it's MDOT's jurisdiction. And I've already covered that with you. It's not MDOT's jurisdiction. Yes, they can do the stuff for you and make a recommendation, but their urgency is not. It's at the, actually at the township level and the discretion of the Road Commission, whether they want to do that. The city of Lapeer is on M twenty-four and they've taken it. So they've reduced speed from forty, fifty-five to forty-five to thirty-five, all the way through their jurisdiction, through the city's use. And the only reason I know that is because we have property down there and we're right in the thirty-five zone. And I just happened to have a meeting with the MDOT guys about a curb cut and I asked them. So roughly about twenty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars for all three of those intersections to be addressed ASAP. I told them that I wanted it done by December fourth. As a contractor, I know it'd take at least two weeks for me to even do that myself, a week to get the materials and a week to do the installation. Being the Road Commission and the unbelievable budget that they have, I'm sure they could have done it sooner or will do it sooner. I also informed that if they don't do it, that I would like a letter from their attorney stating why it won't be done. And their clear reasons on why it won't. And it'll also be added to the December fourth meeting to discuss their actions. That's what I discussed to them. It was about a thirty-minute discussion. I also printed off their, this is actually on the website for the Tuscula County Road Commission and the right-of-way encroachment policy, which is on page twenty-six, just the purpose, I'll read it to you really quick. To establish procedures governing the use of roadside areas under the jurisdiction of the Board of the County Road Commissioners, based on its responsibility to maintain a roadway system that's reasonably safe and convenient for public travel. That's their policy, that's basically like their mission statement. I also brought to their attention too, that a few different townships were also, would be willing to cover the costs. I know Ellington Township, where I believe I live in, said they would slash figure out how to fund that project. So funding is not an issue. It's just lack of due diligence and and this is my opinion, effort. Also on page sixteen, regulatory and advisory science procedure, there's, it lists exactly what they do. Every one of these things, they said they have to do an engineering study, which with all due respect, if the sheriff of our community, the lieutenant state police post of our community and our Board of Commissioners of our community say, hey, we have a problem at least five of our intersections, I think we can skip the study. It's just a rubber stamp. Because it also says in here that the Road, the Board of Road Commission Commissioners, all five of them have the jurisdiction authority to approve or deny anything in this packet. And so it's just it's red tape that we don't need. And so I also told the Road Commissioners that I think they're unnecessary. I think it's a waste of money. I know between the five of them that they bring in about thirty-five thousand. It's sixty-nine hundred per commissioner, plus another seventy-four hundred for the chairperson. I think that budget should be allocated more better. My opinion, I would give it to Sheriff Robinson, if that's possible. I'm not your guys, that's your problem. And I think there's some unnecessary funding and plus the benefits they get too. I think you guys, I think they get Blue Cross Blue Shield. So judging by the board's age, they're probably a thousand dollars a month. So we're looking at about sixty grand that we could save and give back to our community or switch to a department that actually needs it. I do want to say that the supervisor, William Green, I think he's a great man. I think he's doing wonders for the Road Commission. I think sometimes his hands are tied. And I think if he had direct access to you guys, he could totally change Tuscula County. I, our highest level of effort in our family is one to ten. We always say, hey, one to ten. William Green, it would be a ten. He, he's already doing everything that he can do, but making him, I don't know your guys' infrastructure, but making him like COO, Chief Operating Officer, that reports directly to you guys. I think we would have a better Road Commission that would surpass Huron County. I know Huron County is going leaps over bounds and it's always a pleasure to drive in there. But I think Mr. Green would, would, would be great at that. I did look up the MCLs, but the county clerk, Fettin, would probably know better than that. Since they are elected, it's on you guys to do two things. For a county with an elected Road Commission, number one, the county of Board Commissioners must submit the question to the county's registered electors in a regular election. So this is something we'd have to put on August's ballot. And then a majority of the voters would approve or deny the existence of the Road Commission Board Members. I ask that you guys think about it, pray about it, but I think this is something that would be, should be done. I think we have too many bosses and we're getting too far away from actually getting stuff resolved. And I've seen all with all due respect to Nancy, God bless you, you were at that meeting. She seems very proactive. God bless you. I think you're going to be a great addition to keeping these four guys in line because they're guys. And we love them, but there's, I look at the organizational skills, there's papers all over the place. You're the only one organizing. I don't know you yet, but your effort, your eagerness and your attitude towards the community, that's, I can only give you a ten for that. And so I ask that you guys pray about it, but I would like to see the, the Road Commission Board Members. I think, I would like to see that jurisdiction put back over here and have William Green report directly to you guys and we can cut some of this red tape and get some stuff done. And so all the stuff that they're telling you that it takes MDOT, it takes this, it takes that, it doesn't. We are the final say in our own community. MDOT is the minimum standard and I think we can do better. And I think we can cut out a lot of this red tape. That's my presentation to you guys today. Like I said, December sixth, isn't it sixth, fourth or sixth? I don't know, it's on my calendar. I'll go back to the Road Commission and tell them what I said. And what I said to you guys today is exactly what I said to them. So that's all I have to report. Do you guys have any questions?
Well, I know Mr. Patricia Bardwell, since I've been out here, you know me, I've been pushing, I've been pushing for just what you're talking about since I've been on here. The feedback I get from, from people here. Do we, do we go to the people and say we want to make them appointed or do we eliminate the board? Okay, now, if you, if you eliminate the board, you bring all that work to this office. You know what I'm saying? If you make them appointed, you bring the control to the board, back onto this board, basically, which we still are. By law, we're still the executive board to the Road Commission Board. But being elected officials, it's, it puts a different spin on it. I, I hear what you're saying. I've been after doing that for, since I've been here because I want to get rid of the red tape and that was always, that was always an issue. I appreciate your presentation and it's something that I think the board needs to talk about and discuss and be serious about it. Because I think as far as the community, it would serve the community better if we brought the leadership back under one.
Yeah, like, but there's too many, there's too many bosses. And that's why I recommended Mr. Green, if he'd be, take that burden and be your liaison. But you guys, you guys know best on whether you want to appoint or, but it's, it's the good old boys down at the Road Commission. That's how my, my interpretation of it. And I don't think anything's going to change until somebody tells it to change. And I know that Tuscula County has always been kind of a lackluster. Even when snowplowing comes, we're always like, hey, don't go down that road. Go down Hurts Corner to this road to get to Huron, if you want to go to Huron. So I do know, and I think you guys should know, there's been seven accidents since my parents' accident on Hurts Corner. Just not this Sunday, but last Sunday, me and Blake were the first on the scene. Again, we were going to Carroll and a B truck going east hit a truck going north to work. They're going to Blue Diamond. It was four individuals who then ended up not having insurance and fled the scene. Got T-boned, but they got their truck started again and left. But that was a, quite a debacle. But that was the seventh accident in forty days, just on Hurts Corner. And so I think the study has been completed. I think we should know what we should do. And I brought that up to them too.
And it was the same too, Billy, when I was, I went to them about M twenty-four around Mayville. You know, I mean, your businesses over there know what they need for speed. They see it every day. They don't need a study to tell them how many times people are slamming on the brakes, how many times people are going to. They come to me and they said, hey, we see this every day. They, they changed speed up there for the people, which is great, but they speed it up for us, which we're in the same boat as they are.
Yeah.
So, you know, and when I checked into it, it was like, you're kidding, that's what we got to do.
Yep.
You know, and, and before you get it done, you defeat it.
Yep.
So that's why it doesn't get done. But I understand exactly what you're saying. Any questions for, for?
Just so you know, Billy, I got the same answers when I went up there for M fifteen and Birch Run Road. We have to do a study and there's not enough. Not enough. How many people got to get killed and hurt out there? I mean, rumble strips, you said the price.
I'm asking for this bare minimum.
Yeah.
And that's that budget, the twenty-nine thousand, that's we buying it at retail from a website that offers MDOT certified rumble strips and signage. I'm sure the county can get it cheaper slash might even have it in stock. And it's, it's not rocket science. It's just due diligence.
I was told we don't do that. We don't put rumble strips in.
Yeah, I was told things too, growing up, and I said, too bad.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, there's just a point of diminishing return. And I mean, Huron County, I went up there, we have property up there and they have numerous intersections that are dangerous to them. That they have rumble strips, they have rumble strips and lighting. They actually, I think it was Codwood Road and Seawing Road or Bay City Forestville, they ended up making it a four-way stop. And that was a triple-A road that's heavily traveled. So they're recreating the wheel. They see an urgency to protect not only property, but also life. And I mean, what is, you know, the government is here to help. It's not a saying that I take with a grain of salt. No, they're not here. It's we, the people, that are here to help. And I know, you know, I don't want to just take on Hurts Corner and, and Deckerville and make it all about, God forbid, my family. But I was listening to your guys' concerns and if it's just not just my road, I can, I can understand. I'll, I'll find a different way to go home. But you had a concern, everybody here on the board had some concern or some piece of property that their constituents have been complaining about and it's not getting done. And like I said, MDOT is not a jurisdictional authority. They're the minimum standards, like building a house. There's the minimum standards, you have to meet it or exceed it. And the township and the, the county is in charge, just like our sheriff. Our sheriff is the say-all, be-all. He's our, our protecting force for the county. And if he's saying something needs to be done, I think we should take his words for it. Same thing with the state police. I mean, we have enough people that have jurisdictional authority putting their expert opinion on it. And the Road Commission, literally, the meeting was forty-five minutes long, give or take, and I was probably twenty-eight to thirty minutes of it. I went through some of their old previous minutes and their, their, their board meetings are just, I feel, a reason to collect a check. And but I think if you guys structure it right, we could be the, we should be the leader in how rural communities should traffic their, their communities. And so that, I'm bringing it to you guys. You guys are the experts in that. Whatever I can do to help, I would love to help. If it's collecting petitions, if it's getting a thousand people in here, if it's getting sixteen hundred and million people in here, I'll do it for you guys. But I think protecting lives and creating a safer environment for our community members is top priority. And those, there was only four present at the time. Those four individuals didn't seem like they were urgent to do anything. So.
Chairman, I, I have a question for Mr. Bardwell. What, when did it change when they become appointed to elected? And why did they do that?
Here's a short version.
Okay.
It takes instances like this, but back, Chairman Peterson, there was a lot of discussion back then of bringing the Road Commission under the county. At the time, the controller administrator was totally against it for various reasons. So for whatever reason, as I recall, Chairman Peterson felt it was better for the people to pick their people versus the board. And that's how that got transferred. The reality of it, the board always assured that there was somebody representing the county. It wasn't all clustered in this area. Now, when you elect, you can get, they can all be from Carroll or Vassar or whatever. Big mistake. There's always been a reluctance and you resonate. This is just like living in the past and coming forward. It just takes another tragic circumstance. The, what Huron County had with John Haunt and what we should have had years ago, because it's, it's as Commissioner Young would say, kick the can down the road. And Jack, Lori and I previously chaired, had many discussions on this. But I think seriously, in looking at the AI version of what it takes to move back the power to the board, fairly simple. Takes a public hearing and from that, a resolution from the board, may or may not be submitted to the voters. And you're pretty much done unless the clerk has something to add to that. In the situation that we face, and I don't know if you're asked, the latest accident, did they have a speed sign there, blinking?
Yeah.
See, there's no deterrent.
No. So that, I don't think that was from the, the sheriff's department. That was actually from the Road Commission. It just said that you're doing fifty or fifty-five or sixty or whatever your speed is. But that doesn't help in front of a stop sign. I'm already slowing down and they had it about four hundred yards from the stop sign. So it'd be like saying, don't be on your phone, but you're in your deer blind. So.
Well.
Yeah.
Going back to that Commissioner, so that was sort of the transition and I'm certainly in, I certainly support bringing it under the county with Green as the CEO. More control. We have the influence, which as you've just learned, is not very influential, as with the state police, as with the sheriff. And perhaps this is, is an opportunity because we don't know the future and what's going to happen on that road. And if you take Dodge Road. And if you take Dodge Road, not much difference. Other, it's not a Class A road coming down from 81 and that's a speed trap, the state police, Brian knew it was this, they go 70. I know, you know, we all know what goes on in that road. So it's really time to seriously consider this, especially with your response, what you're getting, the perception that you're bringing to this board. We shouldn't have to listen to that. They should have been taken care of. They can throw down rumble strips. They can do something immediate, you know, just because, how many does, you said seven or nine? How many?
I answered all, I didn't want an argument that, oh, it takes money, it takes a study. We need to get a grant. I mean, I'm throwing out this here too, to put, to buy a stoplight as a permanent response to Boy Scout Road is not a road commission. Come on. We have a permanent stoplight on, on Boy Scout Road coming off of, is it East Dayton there? As a solution because of the invasion. Now, I don't know how long that's been. I think we're over 10 years now for that problem. And they said, well, you got to write grants, you got, has anybody written a grant from the road commission on that standpoint? I mean, that should have been fixed slash depreciated by now, but let's just put permanent power in a stoplight on Boy Scout. That's not a solution. That's just lack of due diligence. And I know you guys probably have grant ranners, there's grant ranners that'll just do it on a commission base, which the grant will pay for. But yeah, I think there's a need.
Well, the money is one thing. We, I think we had seven or nine accidents since that time.
Yeah.
How many does it going to take? And what you really brought to light is the continuing saga of leadership and responsiveness and a sense of urgency, especially to the community. It just seems like it's not my backyard, I want to address it.
Yeah, I'd say that on my.
So I guess that's the summary and it's, here we are today. I will say something that you've hit on very well, but everybody knows. On Deckerville Road, you know where Sanolac County starts and the other.
Yeah.
Do you not? Yeah, it's a nine day.
Nine day.
Nine day. How that works out, I don't know.
And, and again, when I forgot, because that was, that was a big thing on mine, in fact, I forgot it, that and the Carroll Dam. Those two things, those two things that I was vigilant on, you know, when I first got elected. And the township would support, because the township had enough problems that they say there's got to be a change somewhere. Okay, but again, the big question was, do you want to make it a appointed board? Do you want to dissolve the board? Bring the finances back to this board? Who, babe? Erica knows she's got on her plate right now. If we stack the finances of the road commission in this office.
I would have to just sleep here.
But, but some of the things, have discussions, but you're absolutely right.
And I do know like Mr. Tuckey, he's the chief director of finances.
And when I first got elected.
He's doing a good job.
One of the things I did was, they went to elected because they said, let the people elect.
Yep.
Honest face, that's great. But see, they're not like us, so you don't get elected by districts like we do. They get elected by the population.
Yep.
So when I first got out of here, four out of the five people all lived within 80, 11 miles from each other.
Yep.
That's what really got to me. That's why I pushed for to do what I did.
Yeah, even if you go the appointment route, you might even put in your bylaws that it has to be appointed from one of your districts. So it's a five, you got to spread the law.
That's been checked out.
Exactly.
And we were not able to do that. But that's what, that's what got me wanting to begin with, because just the way it happens, by honest face, elect five, we want the people to have their representatives. But they didn't work out of the most populated areas. I wouldn't, all the elections.
Yep. And I know we have an election coming up and I know we have two board members that we could replace, but this is a five board member problem. I'm not going to wait five years to redo the whole board. So that's my opinion.
I, I'd like to see the appointed and have one from each district. If you got a problem with your township, that district, you call that guy or girl or whatever.
And then they come here and tell you guys.
That's right.
Every other department comes here.
You can do it by appointment.
Yeah.
We've kind of done that since, you know, people have passed away and this and that. We've tried to take, look at, you know, who's representing where, you know, that's the only way you can do it by appointment. You can't do it by election.
I totally agree.
We don't do it by appointment today.
No.
If somebody passes away or something like that.
Well, yeah.
We will.
But I mean, if we put it back to appointed and each one of them, just like us, we come from our own district, they know what problems they got. They can come to this board and say, hey, this is the problem we have. What can we do to fix it? Somebody that lives in Carroll don't know what's going on in our village township.
And if somebody's not doing their job, then this board can reappoint somebody else with their term.
You may want to consider their fact, you might have the same phenomenon that goes on today, it was in the past, because that sort of drip maybe was part of the driver. Yes, you could have them appointed, but they have to come forward. And there's a lot of, I call it group think in the consulting world, where they, they don't do such thing. And I'm not so sure that even if it came under this board, if we have to take the finance. I mean, the leadership, yes, but in terms of, I wouldn't take everything all once, I would leave a structure, but you went from influence to command and control, check and balance.
Yeah, I mean, like I looked at their organizational chart, like Mr. Tuckey, he's the director of finance over there, he would just come here, like every other department say, here's where we're at, can you guys approve the bills? Here's the spending, I gave it to.
Erica.
Erica, and it's on your packet. Same thing with William Green, him being the super, here's the problems that we're seeing in the community, here's how we're taking it, here's the funding we're going to get, and just make it an extension of you guys, not a problem of you guys. But no, I've never, I've been to probably 100 meetings over the last few years here in this building and I've never seen a road commission board member.
One other thing, Chairman, when was the last time we had another audited, a financial review brought forward to us, the road commission?
That would be a control administrator. There's a lot of things, which we don't have time to get it built right now, but there's a lot of things that we can do for, for, you know, that, but yeah, you're, you're right. We could ask for that any year. I mean, I mean, Erica has the right, before they make their budget, say, we want to see your budget, you know, and it can come to this board for, for review before it's adopted. You say adopt it? No, it's too late. You have to do it before they adopt it. But there's things we could do, but. Anything else for Bill?
I'd just like to not push this on the rug. I'd like to have this back for more conversation and, and see what we can do.
Okay. So like I said, the fourth or the sixth, I forgot, I'll be at the commissioner or road commission meeting, probably get thrown out for some reason for being, speaking my mind, but that's my first amendment, right? And then I'll try to report back, maybe just under public comment, how that went and then see your guys' progress for it. And like I said, I know a lot of people in the community that would assist in helping. So just let me know what you guys are, you guys have the wisdom to be and we'll, we'll help from there. So I appreciate it.
Can we put this back on the committee of the whole in the next one?
There is, the next one is not a committee of the whole, the next one would be full board, November 24th.
Oh, because of Thanksgiving.
So do you want it on that or the next committee of the whole, which would be in December?
I guess that's a pleasure to the board.
If you went to the next committee of the whole, that would be December 8th and that would be after Billy attended the road commission meeting, so.
We said we have time.
Yeah, let's do that, is that all right, Bill?
Let's do the whole, that way we can, we all have time to look at, do some research on all this.
There is some paperwork that could be brought back out that was researched when that was discussed six, seven years ago, when you first brought that up, so.
Okay. Hey. I love you guys, I do have another, I'm glad I was first, but I'm not going to stay here for this long.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. See you guys. All right, we have, we want to go on to number two first for, for get Jeff out of here or do you want to go in the closed session?
I, I think we should go with Jeff because I believe he has to get back to court, but I could be mistaken.
Okay. So let's do that then?
Yes, we have a ring.
Okay. Then we'll move on to number two under, under business, Michigan signed counsel renewal, Jeffrey Stewart.
Very good, it's good to be back.
Good to be back, yeah.
We had some questions actually about the county share that's been set up. So this is Matt Lozen, he is the regional manager.
I'm sorry, how do you spell your last name, Matt?
Allois.
Thank you so much.
And Mr. Lozen is here to answer any questions you might have about the county share being set according to the budget. And as I pointed out, really hasn't changed in over a seven-year period. That amount is 2,055, 255,199.23. So Mr. Lozen's available to answer any questions.
Why don't I just start, well, one, it's nice to finally put a face to the name. I've seen your name on all the contracts for the past couple of years, Commissioner Vaughn, and nice to finally meet you. But the local share, the MIDC Act was passed back in 2013. And as part of that, they created a formula to determine each county, local funding units, local share, what their contribution was going to be. The way they calculated that was they took the average net cost of the criminal defense system for the previous three years, 2010, 11 and 12. And that's how much you spent minus how much you collected from attorney fees from the court. So ideally, starting in October 1st, 2019, your cost should never be higher than what it was back 2013. There, it is adjusted for inflation, but I don't, I mean, I wasn't part of it, I didn't help draft it, I was just fresh out of law school at the time. I think it's a typo in the law, but it benefits you, so no one's ever wanted to change it. It's adjusted by either 3% or the CPI, whichever is lower. But it doesn't go up annually, it goes up only that original number. So this 255, 199, 23, because we've been above 3% inflation for the past couple of years, it's never going to be higher than that until they change the law. Should it be lower than that? My opinion is probably. There are systems that were very aggressive during that time period that collected, went after people and have a lower local share than they probably should. But right now, it's set by law, there's nothing we can do to change it. We all at the MIDC kind of agree, this formula is not great, it's a little broken. I would suggest that you conspire with your fellow counties and the Michigan Association of Counties and your state reps, state senators, and see if we can get a legislative fix, but go ahead.
I'm listening. So what you're saying is, back when, when our calculation was calculated, that's practically what we were spending for the courts as far as, you know, trials and bringing lawyers and whatever. So 250,000, let's ask you that. So in the same three period, I guess my question is, our neighborhood counties were only spending 75? Why were we spending 250?
It's not that that's how much they were spending, it's that's how much they were spending minus what they collected for that period. Tuscola County, I know you're in the thumb, you, it's easy to compare yourselves to Huron and Santa Lac, but Tuscola is much busier than either of those two. Huron County is one of the lowest volume courts in the state. Santa Lac's not far behind that. We do less than, you know, maybe 800 cases a year in Santa Lac.
Okay, so that's, that's what I think was confused all the listeners, that, oh, we got set there because we couldn't fathom it would be that much lower than us. But it's driven a caseload, I understand that.
Yeah. And it's, the collection part's a huge part of it too. There are some systems that have a local share of zero, which doesn't, like, yeah, that was my response too. It shouldn't be. That's a broken system, but that's what the law is currently and until the legislator fixes it, that's set in stone.
Chairman?
Yeah.
So we don't have a staff attorney right now. So if we, if we was to hire a staff attorney, wouldn't that figure go down?
No.
Why?
Because it is what it is.
We still got to pay that staff attorney.
You do. And that's where the extra money from the state comes in, that's where the rest of the 2.1 million comes from. The staff attorney comes out of that, or I guess, yeah.
So it really don't make a difference if we have a staff attorney or not? It just puts more work on Jeff.
Yeah. No matter what, even if you were, even if the system only costs $240,000, your local share would still be set at 255. You wouldn't owe us or owe anyone the extra $50,000, but your local share would still be set at 255.
But yeah, but now, why not fund the staff attorney?
Oh, yeah.
Well, again, it's not costing you anything.
Right.
You're paying this amount if you got staff attorney.
That's why, that's why I couldn't understand, we're, we're paying a staff attorney, but we still pay over here too.
It all goes into the same fund. Whatever, like, let's say it was $10 million, your budget was, you'd still be at 255, we could give in the other nine and three quarters of a million dollars. What you did with that, as long as you have to put it into the budget, submit to the state and us and we review it and say, yeah, that's appropriate, that's not. This year, we've, you know, been going through it aggressively, cutting a lot of things that we call right sizing, because a lot of counties were overfunded. And Tuscola, you're a little over budget for 25, right? Or under budget, I should say. Compared to 24, where you were $400,000 over budget for two years in a row. Last year, we opened the budget season up, the grants up mid-year, they made sure we got you that money. There's a whole other conversation of what happened with that money, that no one here is the blame for that. Yeah. Does that answer your question?
It does, and I have another question. So who puts the, the salary on like Jeff's staff or the attorney? Who sets that standard?
So that's standard eight is for the compensation of attorneys. We set minimum standards for the roster attorneys and then we have more of a guideline for staff attorneys, public defenders, managed site counsel, and just senior staff attorneys like Jeff's assistant would be when he gets hired in, he or she gets hired in. Those are all tied to the attorney general scale, because that's the only other state prosecutor that we can kind of compare to. Jeff would be level 16 as a senior administrator and then the staff attorney would be level 15. And then that one split the A, B and C and it's kind of up to you which one you want to go. You could, if you really wanted to, argue that, hey, we want to go below that rate and we'd listen to you and we've done that in a few counties. I don't know why you would want to do that. Looking through the budget for what this is, for fiscal '26, Jeff's salary is certainly not applying for max across the state.
Thank you.
It's probably on the lower end. I know the Midland County one is a little bit more than that. Santa Lac is a little below what Jeff is, but I was in Mac and Santa Lac before I took this job. I wasn't until I took this job that I realized I was the lowest paid Mac in the state at the time. Huron is part-time, but ends up, you know, making a good chunk of change, just because he was going to get benefits, it's the trade-off there. Yeah, it's, it's set to the attorney general.
So that's the same thing for the gal that's in his office working there, that the attorney general sets that price too?
No.
Who sets that?
That's only for, only attorneys is what we set. It's up to the county to set the administrative staff. But again, any money for that, you know, other than that 255 comes to us. So in theory, it shouldn't cost you a whole lot extra, no matter what it is. I will also say, one of the nice things about how the local share is calculated, because it assumes that you're collecting at the same level of attorney fees that you were doing back in 2013, 2012, as a baseline, any dollar that you actually collect from attorney fees from court cases is bonus. So we already factored in thinking you were going to collect, let's say, $80,000. If you collect $5, not above that, but just $5 at all, then you've got $80,005. So in theory, the program makes you money.
I didn't know. I, I was sitting here, I was born 2016, MIDC wasn't existent when I got here.
We weren't, we existed. The commission existed.
Okay, but.
The first, you know, they passed the act, and the, you know, first thing is, well, we have these commissioners. We have to appoint them. We have to create the standards. We rolled the first four standards out, which were for making sure attorneys are trained, making sure attorneys know that they have to meet with their clients within three days of appointment, making sure experts investigators are provided, and making sure we have attorneys that we call counsel at first appearance, CFA, which is just, you know, you have an attorney at a rate the first time you go in front of a judge or ministry. The payroll standard rolled out in, I want to say 2023.
So they, whoever, like I say, having an outside attorney come in, who polices that that they're not overcharging?
Jeff. Jeff is in charge of all invoices and attorney billing. The, his department, if Erica wanted to step in and weigh in on that as well, she'd be free to, because Jeff works for Erica and for you. Yeah, they're the ones in charge of whether or not attorneys billings are appropriate.
And also, the chairman was here when this was enacted, and it was presented as something that was much needed, and I guess it still is. But the hidden cost that was not discussed back then was the cost and the phenomenon that we're in now. When we look at the billings that Jeff approves to our local attorneys who serve as injured counsel, they're pretty exorbitant, okay? Large amounts. Best thing that ever happened to these attorneys. Best thing. Matter of fact.
Sure.
If they can get on this roster, they will get on it. What it has caused from a prosecutor's standpoint and others, on the other side of the table, just fortunately, the inability to keep up with the state's increases in that realm in terms of salaries or hourly rates for different modems of skills. There's the challenge that this county has, and I suggest other counties does do as well, because in terms of recruiting on the other side, it's very much unbalanced now in my world, but I'd be open to, to debate on that on the injured defense side versus the prosecutor, prosecutor's side or, or those outside the injured defense world. There's a major concern, and we're facing that right now in terms of recruiting, retention. But if you're an injured defense attorney, and I don't know how that, how the case is going to sign, but if I were one, I would definitely be in line because I just, the phenomena of the billings and the payouts, and I'm not saying they're not worth it, it's just the county cannot keep up with it, which also puts pressure on the rest of the county in terms of wages, in terms of, you know, expectations. You have one drawing, and it always happens that way. If the state funds it, you really get out of, out of disportionment at that point. And I was just surprised, we set the administrative, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, who's the administrative that we set the salary in your office with the board? Who is that? Did this, did our county would set that versus the state?
The secretary.
The secretary? Well, I don't think we're too concerned about the secret. Not to be facetious, but it's very small in terms of scope, in terms of this county's oversight.
I'll admit, that's the first time anyone's asked me about who says the secretary is paying.
Yeah, I could just, well, who is it that we set, well, the secretary? Well, that's really, okay.
Or office administrator, I should call him. He's more of a secretary.
Something like that. But compared to the others, that's really, I like to use the word decimal best compared to what we are faced with in terms of compensation, which we're going into a bunch of, closing here. I want you to be aware of that, and I'm sure you are, what it's causing, and I'm sure that it's not Tuscola County, but we do have our prosecutor here in the back row, and I'm sure she's here with those same concerns.
Sure.
And many more, I'm sure. But I don't have a remedy to this, but certainly from the state level, we just cannot maintain the level that in terms of pay that would be potentially to somewhat even out, not have to be equal, but still there is some balance that these people, however.
Sure. So starting at the beginning, you're right, this is the best thing that's happened to defense attorneys and criminal defense in Michigan probably ever, maybe since Gideon versus Ray, right, was decided by the Supreme Court, and we said that you're entitled to an attorney for criminal cases. And then eventually that was incorporated to the states as well. I was a roster attorney for about a decade in St. Clair County prior to this, and I'll tell you, you know, I had $100,000 in student loan debt and was struggling to pay any of my bills, making at the time, when I started, it was 68.96 an hour. Then decreased it to $60 an hour a year or two after I started. Using a nice round number, Huron County was, or actually Santa Lac and Huron, we're both at about $50 an hour prior to standard eight getting passed over the OAC starting, which waited to effect, by the way, on October 1st, 2018, is when we actually launched the first fiscal year.
That's kind of what I was, more thing, I gave her in 2012.
Yeah. All right. It, it took five or six years for us to ramp up and get going, because we're a brand-new agency. But, you know, you take $50 an hour, which sounds like a ton of money. You do that 40 hours a week, 52 weeks a year, you're a little over $100,000 a year. I worked for a firm, so 60% of it right off the top went to overhead, so now I'm down to $40,000 a year. That's before I have to pay my insurance premium, so that's another $10,000 a year, and all of a sudden, I'm down to $30,000 a year as a criminal defense attorney. That wasn't sustainable, and that's why there was, the MIDC was started, because we got, the state got sued as a class action. They, NAPD, the National Association of Public Defenders, put together a study, which was unfortunately called Race to the Bottom, how Michigan was, I don't want to say 47, 48 out of 50 for criminal defense, and we needed to do something about it. And now we've become pretty much a model for the nation. We're rolling out these standards. I think we're doing it better than some of the ones that have tried to copy us. Or we recently rolled out our caseload standards, which Jeff has been doing a good job of incorporating, or again, went much lower on their caseload standards, and they don't have enough attorneys to the point where they are actually dismissing prosecutions because they can't find a defense attorney. To go to your point about prosecutor parity, everyone in the state, regardless of which side you are on, is struggling with attorneys right now. And that's, I should say, state, it's nationwide. I've been attending NAPD meetings, talking about rural shortages for attorneys for years now. And we're trying to come up with incentives and ways to recruit people there. We have public defender offices that cannot get attorneys. It is not isolated to the prosecutor's office. I don't think that pay is the number one reason. It's because we just, it's hard to get people to come to Carroll, it's hard to get people to come to Santa Lac, it's hard to get people to come to Alpena. We keep thinking we've fully staffed the Alpena office, and then they go somewhere, you know, they go to Kent County, they go to Lansing, they go to Detroit.
Thank you.
The long-term solution for it is probably going to be coming from the state. I know Pam, the Prosecutor's Attorney Association of Michigan, may have had the A's backwards. There has been lobbying hard to get their own state fund. We've been watching, we've been encouraging them to do it. We've been saying that we want prosecutors to make more and that the money should come from the state. That's the official MIDC position, and outside of it being our official position, I haven't met a single one of my coworkers who disagrees with it. We all want good, well-paid prosecutors. We don't want just the people that you could hire that are just out there doing a half-assed job. We want them to be professional, we want them to be the best you can get. We want that on both sides. Why the legislature hasn't picked up on that, I don't know. I know that's not an answer or a solution to your question, but.
Well, that's.
There probably was no answer or solution to it.
It was pause.
It is what it is right now, yeah.
Without any future other than maybe the legislature, which was only starting with nine bills all year, and, and we all know what goes on there. But it is, when we get it back to the grassroots, whether everybody's struggling with it or not, that's where the rubber hits the road, and that's where we're at in terms of funding. It becomes deport, disportionment, in the sense that it's almost like it was with injured defense, was not being funded well. So I, I don't have the answer to the parity either. I'm surprised the state would like to fund a prosecutor, so the state would fund a prosecutor and the injured defense, and they just go at each other.
Yeah.
That is, that's a novel, that sounds like a state solution.
It really does.
Just take the figure of money and let them go at it in the courtroom, and we'll make sure, well, when does that stop? Then you have everybody else who either, well, there wouldn't be any contract lawyers, divorce lawyers, or anyone else, because obviously, the same phenomenon would probably happen. And that's all conjecture.
Yeah. No, I've more than once opined on the irony that my organization, funded by the state, sole purpose is to make another government organization's job harder.
I know in schools, some of the teachers get their student loans kicked back because they're teaching in adversely populated rural areas. That doesn't happen with the attorneys?
It doesn't. If you're a public defender, you can take advantage of the public service loan forgiveness, hopefully, something that exists by the time you complete your 10 years. But we just don't have anything in place for a roster attorney to do that. I'm not entirely sure what that would look like. I'm sure there'd be, have to be some kind of, you have to dedicate a minimum percentage of your practice, you have to do it for so many years. No one has had the appetite to look at that formula and try to figure out the logistics of that, would be my guess. It's not a bad idea. I'm sure there's been, I'm sure the NAPD has looked at it a little bit, but I haven't seen anything concrete.
Whoever's listening out there.
Yes, please.
Whoever's listening out there. If, if there's shortages, and that's an alternative to helping get people staffed in, somebody should be looking at that.
Sure. I mean, the problem honestly really came out of nowhere. I used to coach mock trial high school for K-Pac, and, you know, the kids would come up and say, man, I'm thinking about going to law school, what should I do in college? And at the time, I would tell them, you might want to consider something else. When I got out of law school in 2009, you know, the market crashed, we went into the Great Recession, there were no jobs available for attorneys. Every single law firm in Detroit was downsizing. My dad worked for one of the big firms down there, had the St. Clair County branch, they shut that down, wanted to move him to Southfield, which he said, no, I'm in my 70s, I'm going to retire. It's, you know, we had way too many attorneys. We also had the largest law school in the country. Cooley Law had 4,000 law students, they're now down to 400, which was a necessary reduction for other reasons. But a decade ago, yeah, they needed to downsize, and now we're of the opinion that, no, everyone that ever mentions law school, I encourage them, yes, you should absolutely do that, we need every single one of you. It seemed like it almost happened overnight.
Comment, German.
Yeah.
What Commissioner Barrios was talking about in the health care, it's the underserved areas, they were provided opportunities for loan reimbursement, all kinds of things. That's very common in healthcare, and the same language you're talking about in terms of attracting talent in rural areas, and, and don't forget, there are many cities who want to go to rural areas because of the nature of the city. So if there was anybody listening, which Barrios just mentioned in legislation, something related to attorneys in the underserved areas would be at least a stopgap to allow loan forgiveness, perhaps some compensation, which that is also part of the healthcare. But it does come with a, with a two-year agreement or whatever they're going to craft on it, you have to make, you have to still stay there and be where you're at. But I wanted to comment on that because it's a very good opportunity, and unfortunately, we don't even see that getting the muster that you had just mentioned in terms of, well, is this a possibility to assist? It's not going to go away.
No.
Back to you, Chairman.
Any more questions?
So I see that we got motion, because we didn't approve this thing last time, right here, Jeff. We got.
Yes, we did a motion.
We didn't approve, I see we have.
For the board to approve Chairman Long to sign the grant contract agreement with the MIDC to, for fiscal year 2026, a bunch of our particular office.
Then I see we have option A, and option B, that I think is referring to wage increase that you want to give the administrator, know what that is?
This would be the office manager position?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it reflects really a rewrite of.
I was going to say, we don't have that.
We don't have that.
I got, I'll give it, okay, I'll give it to somebody, you know, I was just trying to get a.
Yeah, what I've done is I rewrote the, the actual position. It reflects, certainly can look that passed on, it would reflect the expanded duties that the particular employee would have as an office manager. Now, it certainly goes well beyond any kind of legal secretary position description, and actually had the description for comparison.
Oh, I see here, that's option B.
But it would, it would include a rate of pay that is actually defined by step level, so there'd be a step one, two, and three to this particular position. Three being the highest, you know, $25 per hour. That would be more reflective of an individual who's working within the office for over five years. And in this particular instance, this employee's worked seven years with the actual office from the onset. And it would also reflect working with our people in Lansing who are responsible for accounting purposes and things like that through not one, but three different computer systems that are utilized. So that is the reflection of that particular position, and it's included in the budget for this calendar year or fiscal year, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the other, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I don't, in both these options, I don't see a dollar figure. I mean, I know we said step one, two, and three, but.
Option B is basically the wage is to be determined at later date as revealed in the budget process by the board commissioners.
That would be fine.
And his, and what option A is, he's already said what he wanted to pay his assistant, it's just included in that amount.
It's in the budget.
Right, it's in the budget.
But it's not, it's not approved by the board.
Right, I think option B would probably be the best thing for us.
Right. What I would think is appropriate is to put it to the controller.
That, that's what we're discussing, what we want here, wage.
Is that postponing B, or what is B?
B is we're approving his contract, except, but the part where it's for the wage increase for the administrator, we're leaving to our discretion what that's going to be, instead of what contract says it's going to be.
Right. And Chairman. So it's been budgeted, it's just like that position that hasn't been filled. We're going out about six months without an additional staff attorney. I really have doubts that I'm going to get any interest in postings, because when I previously posted that position at the rate, approximate rate, counting for inflation two years ago, I had one. I had one candidate. You're talking about this position? I had one person.
No, not the.
So all I'm saying is that we're going to have some overage, I think, you know, in the year. Does that benefit the county if there's an overage? I think it does, because we're allowed to keep that overage and apply it to future obligations, as I recall. Is that correct?
It is. Whether or not that's really a benefit to the county or not, it is, I suppose, available. It doesn't hurt the county.
Right.
So Chairman, if I get this right, if we went with option B, it has to go back to, back to us to see what she makes per hour.
Right. We just control her wage per hour.
Right.
Option A is already.
What I can do is supply the two different job descriptions, so the board can take a look at that. What I would do is send it through Erica and have her look at it and then just assign it to the board for review. With that said, Chairman, I know this, you have, apparently, a copy of that, but was, it looks like it was just brought in today. Yeah, it's, it's relatively new. Has the control administrator's staff had an opportunity to review that? Wage rate and all that? Yeah, it was sent maybe about a week ago or whatever.
Okay, did Shelley review it? I don't, I have not reviewed it.
It's really in the process of review.
Okay.
Of course, they're in the middle of a calendar year budget. We're on fiscal year, so strength, we're like the step, redheaded stepchild in a way, because everybody else is on the calendar year, my office is on the fiscal year. So I'm sure they'll be able to get to that, and what I'll do is I'll prepare a memo to the controller, so that they can at least have an idea of what my, my assessment is with regard to that.
We, we got to get, we got to get this approved for the state, to get this, this done with. Option B is probably our best one, just, that just gives us the control of, of what the administrator makes. Once the budget process comes out, which we're comfortable with and all that, and be looked at, so we'll take a motion on, option B, the board.
So Chairman, does option B supersede the motion that's in the original agenda?
Yes.
Okay. You're the only one that has option.
I'm clear.
Commissioner?
No.
Okay, the motion is moved to approve the request from Joffrey Stewart, managing counsel for the compliance plan across the new fiscal year 2026, in the amount of $2,129,768.24, including Tuscola County's local share of $255,199.23, as presented, with wage increases to be determined by the board of commissioners with the 2026 budget process and authorize, and authorize all signatures and budget amendments. That's the motion.
That's the motion, is that it?
I'll support. Then moved by Commissioner Barba, as far as by Commissioner Barrios. To move to approve the request from Jeffrey Stewart, managing assigned counsel for the compliance plan and cost analysis renewal 2026 in the amount of $2,129,768.24, including Tuscaloosa County's local share of $255,199.23 as presented, with wage increases to be determined by the board commissioners, with the 2026 budget process and authorize all signatures and budget amendments. That is the motion. Any more discussion? Here, none on fairs, aye?
Aye.
Motion is not approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
There is a correction to the motion to go into closed session. I'm not for sure who has the official copy. So in the first sentence, it should be section eight, print and one, print and C. The one is excluded in the motion.
Okay.
You can read that motion now, eh?
Yes. I make the motion moved at the board meeting closed session pursuant to section eight, one, C of the Open Meetings Act in order to discuss strategy connected with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements with Jamie Nacitas, with Bronn Hedrick, Erica Dibble, Jody Fettin, Shelley Luce, and Ian Lee, to be allowed to attend the closed, closed session at nine, 12?
10. I show nine, 10 on my computer.
10, nine, 10?
Yep.
Okay. I'll support it.
The move by Commissioner Cook, support by Commissioner Luce. To move that the board goes in closed session pursuant to section eight, one, D C of the Open Meetings Act in order to discuss strategy connected with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements with Jamie Nacitas, Bronn Hedrick, Erica Dibble, Jody Fettin, Shelley Luce, Ian Lee, to be allowed to attend the closed session at nine, 10 a.m. Any more discussion? All fairs, aye?
Well, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah, wrote me the little column over there.
Thank you. Commissioner Barrios?
Yes.
Commissioner Barba?
Yes.
Commissioner Luce?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Would post that.
Thank you. Commissioner Barrios?
Yes.
Commissioner Barba?
Yes.
Commissioner Luce?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Would post that.
Thank you. Commissioner Barrios?
Yes.
Commissioner Barba?
Yes.
Commissioner Luce?
Yes.
Commissioner Cook?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Would post that.
We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session. So again, the doors are open and you're welcome to come in. With that being said, we're going to take about a 10-minute recess and then we'll come back into the meeting. We're back into the committee meeting again. We're out of closed session.
We have sent out our letters and we've received some responses from folks that want to be reappointed, as well as we have received some interest from new members. I do have amended motion that I handed out to you today that's on a separate sheet of paper. I apologize for being so long, we do try to do this at a committee of the whole, so you don't have to read this very long motion. If you would like, I can have Tanya read it for you as well, I'll decline myself because I'm a little horse getting over a cold, but we would be glad to assist because it is rather lengthy. I did it amended because we do have, item L was added for the Veterans Affairs Committee, but we still will have some vacancies that we, I'm requesting to continue to advertise for within the various boards and commissions. All of our seats will not be filled today by this reappointment motion. And then we do have one motion in our review. Pat Gray did not get reappointed back in February to the Land Bank Authority, because that is at an off cycle, that appointment is the end of February, beginning of March, is when those terms, that was missed, and so we just need to do one to clean that up. If you would like us to assist that, I'll have Tanya come up and read that if you don't have any questions. On letter F, we do just have, we're gonna leave the blank as a blank, because we're waiting to make, see if that person is going to apply, so we're gonna just do the two for today on that one. Or if you're okay, Commissioner Cook, you're good?
I'm good. That was my only question on the blank.
Yes.
Was it supposed to be blank? I'd like to make, move to appoint the following members to the respective board and commissions. Corey Skinner and Matt Foley to the 911 Dispatch Authority Board for a two-year term expiring December 31, 2027. Donald Kleinsmith to the Airport Zoning Board of Appeals to, for a three-year term expiring December 31, 2028. Eugene Davison, Carolyn Wymore, Jane Ry, can you help me with that one?
Remarsick.
Remarsick. Sharon Hallwinder to the Council on Aging for a one-year term expiring December 31, 2026. Patrick Silver to the Jury Board for a six-year term expiring December 31, 2031. Alyssa Bolton to the Department of Human Services Board to a three-year term expiring December 31, 2028. William Thomas, Isabel Hill to the Parks and Recreation Committee to the, to a three-year term expiring December 31, 2028. Lonnie Kester and Jane.
Remarsick.
Remarsick to the Planning Commission to a three-year term expiring December 31, 2028. Patrick Fraser and Michael Warchuck to the Recycling Committee to a three-year term expiring December 31, 2028. Anne Cherry to the Health Department Board of Directors for a five-year term expiring December 31, 2030. Thomas Bardwell and Kim Lawn to the Economic Development Commission, EDC Board of Directors for a six-year term expiring December 31, 2031. Henry Wymore to the Region Seven Board of Directors as the Tuscola County Representative for a partial term expiring March 31, 2028. Frank Franzel to the Veterans Affairs Committee to a partial term expiring December 31, 2027, and Catherine.
Kreisen?
Kreisen to a full term expiring December 31, 2029.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cook, or by Commissioner Barrios, to move to appoint the following members to the respective boards and commissions. Corey Skinner and Matt Foley to the 911 Dispatch Authority Board for a two-year term expiring December 31, 2027. Don Kleinsmith to the Airport Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term expiring December 31, 2028. Eugene Davison, Carolyn Wymore, Jane Remarsick, Sharon Hallwinder to the Council on Aging for a one-year term expiring December 31, 2026. Patricia Sauber to the Jury Board for a six-year term expiring December 31, 2031. Alyssa Bolton to the Department of Human Services Board to a three-year term expiring December 31, 2028. William Thomas and Isabel Hill to the Parks and Recreation Committee to a three-year term expiring December 31, 2028. Lonnie Kessler and Jane Remarsick to the Planning Commission to a three-year term expiring December 31, 2028. Patricia Fraser and Michael Warchuck to the Recycling Committee to a three-year term expiring December 31, 2028. Anne Cherry to the Health Department Board of Directors for a five-year term expiring December 31, 2030. Thomas Bardwell and Kim Lawn to the Economic Development Commission, EDC Board of Directors for a six-year term expiring December 31, 2031. Henry Wymore to the Region Seven Board of Directors as Tuscola County Representative for a partial term expiring March 31, 2028. Frank Franzel to the Veterans Affairs Committee to a partial term expiring December 31, 2027, and Catherine Christian, a full term expiring December 31, 2029. Any more discussion? Here, none on Thursday? Aye?
Aye.
Motion is not approved.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Patricia Gray to the Land Bank Authority to a three-year term of office effective March 1, 2025, expiring February 29, 2028. This appointment was missed in February of 2025, and is considered retroactive for an effective date of service.
Support. Bill McCallum, like, for like, Mr. Lutz, to move to appoint Patricia Gray to the Land Bank Authority to a three-year term of office effective March 1, 2025, expiring February 29, 2028. This appointment was missed in February of 2025, and is considered retroactive for an effective date of service. Any more discussion on that, boys? All affairs say aye?
Aye.
Motion is passed.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the county clerk to advertise as necessary for any seats remaining vacant on the various boards and commissions.
Support. The move by Commissioner Lutz, the move to approve the county clerk to advertise as necessary for any seats remaining vacant on various boards and commissions. Any more discussion on that? All affairs say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is not approved.
Thank you, Commissioners, I will take your packets back, because we will use those in getting that, just pass them down if you don't mind, we'll reuse that paper and get it to the Controller Administrator's Office, as well as then to the various board chairs that will need that contact information. And then just a quick update, we did have our November 4 election, we ended up with about a seventeen percent turnout for those matters that were on. The Vastar City Charter was one matter that did pass. Marlet Schools, we had two jurisdictions involving that for a millage proposal in conjunction with the Pier and Santa Lat County, and that matter did pass, and then we had Mayville Community Schools for a millage, and that did fail. So we're unsure as to what Mayville Schools' plans will be, but we are looking at, forward into the 2026 election cycle at this point. So unfortunately seventeen percent turnout, I think, is low, but it was three smaller matters, so we're hopeful that we can encourage a busy election season in 2026, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that was, I think that was it, I was gonna kind of mention in public comments, so, just to kind of bring you up to speed on that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, let's move on to number five. Fire suppression blueprints, they're old stories, Mike Miller, Billy and Groddles.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Some of you may remember that when we contracted with Mark Ransford and Damian Wosik to build our new storage location, in that agreement, they were going to use the tanks from our current fire suppression system in their new build. So what we had currently for storage, they were taking those tanks, putting them in their building as part of our agreement. When that happened, we still had materials still in there that needed to be protected. Total Fire Protection, which was the company that did the project for Ransford-Wosik, gave us, or allowed us to lease a couple of tanks from them during that transition, which the county agreed to do, we still have those tanks, and they're asking us what our plans are going to be for those tanks. We have, in Old Storage, we currently are housing all the blueprints from building codes, which are many. So in your, in your packet, you'll see the proposal to have those scanned digitally, we got that about a year ago, just to scan the blueprints was about $191,000, which obviously the board did not approve. So we still have the blueprints sitting in Old Storage, because we have nowhere else to put them, and Total Fire Protection reached out to me in September, saying, hey, you still have our tanks, if you want to continue to use them, then we want to, you're gonna have to purchase them, and in order to do that, we have to upgrade your system for that to work, so their proposal to do that is $14,176. I did reach out to Vanguard, which is now called Pie Baker, I think, Fire Protection, they gave me an estimate between forty to sixty-five thousand dollars to do the system in there. So I thought that Total Fire Protection is probably our best bet to go with. We did look at, back, back when we did this proposal, the county has to maintain those documents, those blueprints, until seven years after the building no longer exists. So I don't, you know, I, I'm not building codes, I don't know when a building disappears, so we still have all the blueprints, and we have to maintain those. So it's up to the board how they'd like to proceed, and if we, if we don't go with this proposal, they're gonna come get the tanks, and then we won't have fire protection for those prints. That's kind of where we're at at this point, and these, we have had their tanks for almost two years now. That's how long we've been out of our old storage into the new one.
Mike, when I was looking at the proposal in the packet on page, I think it's thirty-seven, it talks about a fire extinguisher recommended, is being recommended for one of the areas, but it was not included.
Oh, we already have fire extinguishers.
Okay, so.
That's just part of it, yeah, that's just part of the, hey, you have to have these. It's, because we already have. They already exist.
Mike, do you know where the fourteen thousand's gonna come from?
Do I? No.
Well, I mean, I don't know if you already had that in your budget, or?
No, it's not in my budget.
Then I guess I asked the question to.
So you've got old prints from, from our, our previous, our previous.
Well, it even goes back to when the county had their own building codes, so all the way back from then to when SMCCI left.
Okay, and we need to keep the, you said for seven years?
Seven years after the building no longer exists.
After the building itself is gone.
Yes.
So pretty much forever.
So if there's a blueprint for this building, which there probably is in our storage somewhere, until this building no longer exists, if you tear it down, then we gotta keep those records for seven.
And they're in our old storage?
Yes.
Where, where's that at?
That's right next to the Sheriff's Department, next, where the mechanic is at.
And there's no one that's over there across the street from the sheriff's?
Yeah, it's underneath Continental Rental.
Chairman, is it full?
Our storage is full, I have reached out to Mark Ransford about adding on to that, he, he is not opposed to it, but we haven't got back together to see, he wanted to have a meeting with Damian, and then meet with us to see exactly how much more we would have to add to fit all of it in there, and then how they could do it and still maintain their fire protection system.
Is that the only thing I've got in that storage over there, is the blueprints?
As far as storage, yes.
That needs to be in there's fire suppression approvals.
I take it there's a lot of them?
Oh, yeah. There's thousands, there's thousands of them. What's that? That was an estimate that he put together, and I would say there's all of it there. It probably, when we moved him, we probably, it was probably five or six pickup truck load full of blueprints.
The fourteen thousand would have to go to capital, is what I'm at?
I would assume that's where you would pull it from.
Commissioner, I do have a question, Chairman. So if we decide not to do it, if, if it does work out, and we end up moving them to Ransford's, okay, what do we owe for the time that we've had these tanks?
We don't.
Okay.
We, they already, we already paid to lease them, they're just, it was supposed to be temporary, but we're going on two years now, so they're reaching out to us like, okay, temporary was temporary, and we're now going on multiple years of holding on to these tanks, we need to know what you want to do. So what I would like, what I would like to see is the board to approve the total fire protection, but I want to get back with Mr. Ransford and see what he can do now. Obviously, that would increase our lease costs to him for that project, so I want to see what is the best option, but I'd like to have this approved, so we could move forward with it if we need to. I just know the meetings are short and few as we get closer in the holidays, and I'd rather have a yes to move ahead, but continue to work with Mr. Ransford as quickly as we can to see if we can.
I mean, the fourteen thousand, one side of the six would be a one-time fee.
Yes.
Well, Ransford, they raised that grade, it would be possible, would be continuous.
Well, I, I can't speak for Mr. Ransford, but I would assume that whatever cost he's going to incur to build out more for us to move these prints to, that he's going to increase your monthly rental rate. And it may be more than fourteen thousand dollars for him to do that, I don't know.
Or we just leave it there with both fire suppressors, take our chances.
You could do that as option C, yes.
Because if they burned it down, we'd like to keep it for seventy years, but we had a fire.
Would be an option, I wouldn't recommend, but that's up to the board.
Eric, is there enough money in the capitals there?
Yes. There's nothing budgeted for that, but they do have a fund balance, we do have a fund balance in there of over a million, I believe.
Chair, I move to approve in place, oh, I'm on the wrong one, move to approve the fire suppression quote from total fire protection in the amount of fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars for insulation in the old storage shed.
So move by Commissioner Lutz, for like, through the barriers. To approve the fire suppression quote from total fire protection in the amount of fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars for insulation in the old storage shed. That is the motion, any more discussion?
Just a question, Chairman, is there, in the basement over there, is there room to expand, is that, okay, so the basement's not fully utilized, it's just?
Yeah, I want to say the county rents or leases about half of the basement's storage on there, but they have the rest of it leased out to somebody, car storage and other things, so it's not, it's not being, not used.
Over there?
Under Continental Rental.
From Ransford.
Go ahead, question. Any more discussion? Eric, none? I guess nobody's interested in my, my decision. All affairs say aye?
Aye.
Not opposed?
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Move on to number six, 2025-26 Contracting of Health Services. Thank you for waiting, bitch, to leave this one.
No problem. So this is an annual contract between the county and Tuscola Behavioral Health Systems that allows the jail, if they have an inmate that
that allows the jail, if they have, um, an inmate that needs to be hospitalized, the county, according to, um, MCL eight oh one point four, the county is responsible for those hospitalization fees. This agreement allows the, or the jail to use our, our case management team to help place someone and, um, use the rates that we have in place for inpatient, um, for the county's benefit. Generally as a Medicaid hospitalization, where you're the lowest payer, or they're the lowest payer, so it gives the county, um, a break generally in terms of, um, the difference between a commercial payment and a Medicaid payment.
It's an annual contract?
And it's an annual contract, yeah.
Do they have any luck, um, placing some of these people?
Two, we did two this past year.
Chairman, I move to adopt the contract for the mental health service for the jail inmates between Tuscola Behavioral Health System, TBHS, and Tuscola County from October one, twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six for the amount listed in the attachment A of the contract and all authorized necessary signatures, all necessary budget adjustments are authorized.
Support.
The move by Commissioner Lutz, for my, for Mr. Barrios, move to adopt the contract for mental health services for jail inmates between Tuscola County Behavioral Health Systems, TBHS, Tuscola County from October first, twenty twenty-five through September third, twenty twenty-six for the amounts listed on the attached A of the contract without our office, necessary signatures, all necessary budget amendments are authorized. Any more discussion of that? Here none? All figures say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, man, for all that, for all that time for that. Appreciate it.
Very good.
You too. Move on to number seven. Do I request for Liberty Masker? That's real bad, right?
Yeah.
Not Sheriff, Under Sheriff is on.
He on, Ian?
Hold on, I'll make sure.
Please check him if he's on.
You there?
He is there?
Hi, uh, this is Under Sheriff, how are you?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Say hello, Bob.
Yeah, just like the motion reads, we'd like to, uh, hire Liberty Masker and send her to the academy. Um, that goes along with the next one, Gabriel Farver, the same situation.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Liberty Masker for the full-time vacant full-time road patrol deputy position. She has successfully completed background check, drug screen, psychological and evaluation on physical. She is scheduled to begin at the Delta College Police Academy on January twelfth, twenty twenty-six. Her rate of pay will be step one at twenty-six oh four per hour. A grant application was submitted on her behalf through the Public Safety Academy Assistant Program to help offset the cost of the academy. I support that.
The move by Commissioner Lutz, for my, by Commissioner Cook, the move to approve Liberty Masker for the vacant full-time road patrol deputy position. She has successfully completed the background check, drug screen, psychological evaluation and physical. She is scheduled to begin at the Delta College Police Academy on January twelfth, two thousand twenty-six. The rate of pay will be step one at twenty-six dollars and four cents per hour. A grant application, excuse me, was submitted on be, on her behalf to the Public Safety Academy Assistant Program to help offset the cost of the academy. Any more discussion? All figures say aye?
Aye.
Motion has passed.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Gabriel Farver for the vacant full-time road patrol deputy position. He has successfully completed the background check, drug screening, psychological evaluation and physical. He is scheduled to begin the Delta College Police Academy on January twelfth, two thousand twenty-six. His rate of pay will be step one at twenty-six dollars, four cents per hour. A grant application was submitted on his behalf through the Public Safety Academy Assistant Program to help up, to help offset the cost of the academy. Support.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cook, for my, for Mr. Lutz, the move to approve Gabriel Farver for the vacant full-time road patrol deputy position. He has successfully completed the background check, drug screen, psychological, psychological evaluation and physical. He is scheduled to begin the Delta College Police Academy on January twelfth, twenty twenty-six. His rate of pay will be step one at twenty-six dollars and four cents per hour. A grant application was submitted on his behalf through the Public Safety Academy Assistant Program to help offset the cost of the academy. Any more discussion on the motion? Here none? All figures say aye?
Aye.
Motion has passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to number ten, the use of the courthouse lawn requests. Eric, got some on that?
We received a request from Lisa Whiteman regarding the Women's Interfaith Committee for Christmas. They would like to put a nativity scene on the courthouse lawn. Um, this is an annual request. Um, it is from November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five through Saturday, January third, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Carol Women Interfaith Committee for Christmas to be used at the courthouse lawn display, the nativity scene from Saturday, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five through Saturday, January third, twenty twenty-six.
Support.
The move by Commissioner Lutz, for my, for Mr. Barrios, the move to approve the Carol Women's Interfaith Committee for Christmas to use courthouse lawn display, nativity scene from Saturday, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five through Saturday, January third, twenty twenty-six. Any more discussion? All figures say aye?
Aye.
Motion has passed. Move on to number eleven.
Next is, um, this is an updated grant. The prior one was already approved for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. However, there were some changes. So this is just an update to the board and permission to sign and accept the funds. They did, the Veterans Service Grant changed what is and is not acceptable, um, use of those funds.
So insurance, they had to redo the grant because they did change of what the qualifications were, this and that. The money is the same, everything's the same. It's just they already came to the board for approval on the other grants, uh, before they realized they had to change.
Money is the same.
Same.
No, the, there is slight reduction.
Slight, oh, slight reduction.
Slight reduction.
Then they, so, but they just had to, to, uh, submit another, another grant. That's all that is.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the fiscal year twenty-six county veteran service fund grant update for forty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents as presented and authorized, all signatures. Support.
The move by Commissioner Cook, for my, for Mr. Lutz, the move to approve the twenty-six county veteran service fund grant update for forty-eight thousand nine sixty-nine twenty-four as presented, all, all three signatures. Any more discussion? All figures say aye?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Move on to number twelve, uh, budget amendment number three, General Fund, Erica Dibble Control Administrator.
With the assistance of Connie, our chief accountant, we're just working on cleaning up, um, budgets for twenty twenty-five. So these are all, again, budget cleanups. We're not asking for more money, we're just asking to u- update one line item for the other line item. We discussed these with departments. If the departments were in disagreement, we did not put them on there, those will come back at a different time. Within our scope, I have authority to do some budget amendments. However, this involves, um, either A, over the, my threshold, or B, wage infringement. So some of the retirement line items were budgeted a little more than needed, so we're moving some of that funds to another line item in the same budget where they need a little assistance or vice versa. And in the packet, I believe, is, uh, Connie put the expenditure revenue reports for you if you'd like to compare what it is and how it came to be.
Chair, I move to approve the budget adjustments, number three, as presented and all necessary budget adjustments aren't authorized.
Support. The move by Commissioner Lutz, for my, for Mr. Barrios, the move to approve the budget amendment, number three, as presented, and all necessary budget amendments are authorized. Any more discussion? Here none? All figures say aye?
Aye.
Motion has been approved. That takes us through the new business. Let's move on into the old business and we'll start with, uh, Department of Natural Resources, the DNR, application for public road, Tom Barwell.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, board members, I'm hoping you had an opportunity to open this up and lose preview of taking up, I think, three years to get to this point, but this is an easement. I want you to see it. Um, it's basically ready to be signed and forwarded into, uh, the DNR. The question I have, if you look at, um, you may want to bring it up, Ian, if you might, I'm looking at the signature page. This is an easement that, um, provides, um, an application to, to use some land within the DNR specifications. If you go up a little further, Cody has put the description in and he's done a lot of work on this and really appreciate it and Representative Alexander's office appreciates that as well because we're trying to avoid the survey. So we'll find out how that works. But since it's just a small parcel, but here's the, the question, uh, the contact persons, myself or Aiden Bricker. I didn't, I wanted the board, um, typically we have the chairman, the board will approve and the chairman will make it, will sign and Aiden's there because he is the bishop I've been working with in the community. Greg's concern was that I had the only contact to the Amish community and so he wanted to make sure I was on there so they'd call me. But on the other hand, I think that could be, uh, an additional note. So going forward, I, what I need is the board's thoughts on, um, the chairman signing this for easement and I'm going to make this somewhat, which I know a little bit about, the octagon barn easement. Um, the only thing, we're not a nonprofit, which that was created with the octagon barn, but they have an easement out there on, uh, for the octagon barn and I don't know what the parallel that would be, but that's the only easement I'm aware of on DNR land on this year. I'm familiar with any and I know you've been involved in a lot of similar projects. So what are the thoughts?
Well, did they strike for three hundred dollars? You still have to pay that?
Well, we're sending it in without the, no, we did pay, the Amish community paid three hundred dollars.
Really?
Yeah. They had the check for probably three. Yeah.
So your question, Mr. is, do you fill out the application and send it in? Is that your question or, or who signs it or?
Someone's got to sign it. Um, I know they want my, applicant signature, applicant signature, Aiden and myself, Aiden and somebody. And, um, because this is an easement, we don't do easements at the border unless it's parking, maybe. I don't remember any. But, um, um, the question is, so we have the chairman sign it?
I don't see no problem.
I don't have a problem. You, you sign it as vice chair.
Um.
If you do, tell us. I'll sign it.
I'm not going to build that bridge.
Are you sure?
Okay. Um, I can, I can do that, um, on behalf of the board. I just want to make sure you're clear with it. The intention is, uh, hopefully to find a steel structure bridge, something that somebody pulled off the road somewhere and use that. Uh, it only has to be a one, a one-lainer, uh, whatever comes out of that. A lot of discussion's been around the bridge and, oh, just to bring it up. All right, so with your, uh, approval, I'll go ahead and Aiden and I'll sign it and.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Commissioner Barwell to proceed with the proposed easement application with the D, Department of Natural Resources, DNR for the easement of the Amish Bridge as presented and all, and authorize all signatures.
The move by Commissioner, I, Lutz, for my, for Mr. Barrios, the move to approve Commissioner Barwell to proceed with the proposed easement application with the Department of Natural Resources, DNR for the easement of the Amish Bridge as presented and authorized with all signatures. That is the most able discussion on that. Here none? Motion has passed.
Brick builder, huh?
Chairman, if I may, Commissioner Barwell, once it's signed, would you please provide my office with a copy for our records?
I'll make sure they're off, yes, I'll make sure the office, Greg, so basically I just have to scan and get the signature, send that back.
Oh, I didn't do a vote on that.
Thank you.
I guess I didn't do a vote on that.
Yeah, we probably should.
All figures say aye?
Aye.
Motion has passed.
Cody, thanks for your help too.
I try. You go, Cody.
Next thing on the old business is twenty twenty-six budget calendar update. Erica Dibble?
As we discussed, uh, earlier, we had a all-department budget meeting. I made adjustments per their recommendation to the budget. We're still not, um, you know, still not balanced, still facing a significant deficit. Um, so I did not put the department request in writing yet. I'd like to ask if you would like me to do that for Monday, the seventeenth, or at what point would you like the department heads to come and, and discuss their requests with you? Or are they only discussing it with me and I'm presenting them on their behalf? Uh, again, we are facing a big deficit and I am working with the departments to try to reduce where we can. But with that being said, you know, the, the number is significant. So please provide, what, what would you like? Would you like me to bring it to you on Monday during the finance meeting to just the finance chair? Or would you like full board on November twenty-fourth for more, um, departmental discussion?
Twenty-fourth. I think we got enough on the seventeenth.
And I've been through, I have been through the discussions.
You got to call me in order. There's a couple of things, you know, and also, because you know, we're, but I think there's a couple of things that we need to really look at. We've got to get a, get a list of, of, you know, non-mandated, we got to look at that stuff. We got to look at all our capital approvals with money, we got to look at all that stuff to see, you know, where money is at in case when we get into these things, you know, where, where we have to, uh, look to cut, um, yeah, all that stuff needs to be looked at, you know? Um, but I guess the, the, the finance committee would rather wait till the, the next committee meeting and bring that stuff up and stuff like that.
I think all the board members should hear it.
Well, I mean, it's, it's there with the, you know, which is fine, the finance committee, you know, there, but, um, whatever, whatever you get, you all wait till the next, let's do it at the next meeting.
So just a question, the finance committee meeting is basically on one topic, correct?
That's currently.
That's currently, so, so we should leave it there.
But if we're, if we're having a meeting with the finance committee, we could discuss the budget at the same time.
So, I mean, I know it's supposed to, we, you all can attend. All right, that's where you're going with it. I'm just backing up to go further. Oh, that makes sense.
That's a public meeting, we can all attend.
Right, well, I was hoping it would.
Yeah.
But I didn't know there could be a, this attitude.
It's an option since we're already going to be meeting.
No, no, this is a, a great option, Eric, that, I guess my question to you, after we went and stepped through, was it six hours?
It was.
You stepped through six hours, I stepped through five hours and.
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes. Um, that was a pretty thorough review and you were very untargeted with many questions, you and others. And I've just, uh, you know, of course I'm challenged with, uh, yes, the board needs to, to have the, the elected in to talk about the budgets that they have questions, but do you sense there's much movement, room for movement?
I don't, departments did their best to try to cut where they could. They're obviously passionate about their, their departments as they should be. Um, and we can't, for, for example, if, if your, if your budget for your department is only a ten thousand dollar budget and you. a $10,000 budget, and you shave $500, that is a big impact because of the percentage of your budget. But if your budget, your budget is a million dollars and you only shave 500, that's a significantly lower impact. So departments did, you know, see where could they shave, they gave other departments input, what can we do to work together? But I do think more work is, is needed. I think that departments need to understand the, the full scope now that I have a better understanding of the ultimate deficit, you know. Currently, you know, it did not decrease after that meeting. It increased because other things were impacted, not just what we discussed in that meeting, but we found more information about different revenue sources that are no longer going to be available and that kind of thing. So our general fund deficit for '26 is currently 1.9 million. So obviously, that's a major, that's a major deal. So we're working to see where can we find, you know, what can we do, however, it's going to impact every department ultimately. So is the solution to have another budget meeting with departments plan, plan for it to be longer and say, everybody bring your pencils because we're gonna, we're gonna?
I think it'll be longer than six.
Longer than six hours?
No, I mean, I only planned that one for one hour. I was apparently, I was apparently underestimated the department involvement, and it was, it was amazing. It was great, the number of people who came, number of people who were able to stay, the, the insights, the historical knowledge, it was, it was really a great meeting. It did go a really long time. Cody thankfully had granulovirus, so if anybody was starving, he could at least give them a snack. Yes, so, so I'm, I'm willing to have another meeting again before the finance meeting or before our next board meeting, if, if departments are available, to say, okay, thank you so much for showing up for round one, now we're round two. Everybody needs to shave.
One compliment, Eric, on what you did, though, because you went one, six hours, line item by a line item, and I don't know what was missed on the line item, but it was, and then any changes you listed in the middle of that webpage on the screen, I mean, it was a comprehensive review that I've never seen, I'd said this three times, never seen done a county with all the elected and anyone who wants to sit in there. And that's why I was just wondering if you thought there was any more wiggle room, because you're right, when, they did make cuts.
They did.
And I don't know what the total of those cuts were, I don't think you totaled them down, at least what I left, but.
And I don't believe I totaled them on here either. We noted, but they've not totaled, and I can't total them because there's text in the same column, that we noted the word done, so Connie and I could track who was handling it and that it was completed.
So I, I just want to say from a, from that review, I'm confident, maybe there could be something removed yet, but we're at that stage where they did.
Yes, they did.
And the next round would be getting in the group. Yeah.
When you have this discussion of the non-mandated projects, were those ones that were discussed?
Not in this meeting, the non-mandated is just something I had planned, I probably have it in a sheet yet, if I do know.
It isn't this, well.
Eric has listed them as well in past agenda.
9/11 for sure, I, I'm not seeing it in this one, but in the 9/11 packet.
And I think you had the amounts there.
I don't believe it's in there.
But you, I don't think, you didn't have the amounts, did you, at that point?
I did not, I just listed the departments.
I think that was the claim. But that was not discussed, although items were brought up during that finance meeting related to, which included Amish control. A lot of great, great questions.
And I was very grateful to the departments, you know, as well as Commissioner Barwell for his historical knowledge, because I, I was not here then. So having his, history does help, and so how I explained it to the departments is, is we're going to roll up our sleeves and work on this together, or I can do it, but I'm only doing it mathematically. I'm just going to say mathematically, your, every department has to be cut by X percentage and, and figure it out. I'm trying to not do it that way, I'm trying to be more, okay, this is coming up for this department that does take priority over this other event for this other department. All departments are equal, however, we cannot just maintain everybody's equal, there are some that are mandated that have to take priority over non-mandated. I, I don't see another solution. But I am open to solutions.
Well, then, I guess, let's bring it back on the, on the 24th. Okay, do the finance committee for you guys to take care of what you have to care about Monday, and we'll bring it back on the 24th. Sound good to everybody?
And one more item, and I don't know if, if this is more of a Jody Fettin question, but perhaps, do I need board approval to take the public hearing notice to the newspaper? Do I need a motion on that prior to, because I have to put it in the newspaper 30 days prior to the public hearing? So I, the deadline to notify the newspaper is on or about November 21st? We don't have a meeting between now and then?
Well, let's put a motion together, just give her a motion.
Okay.
You think there should be a motion?
Yeah, just go ahead and make, make one up.
I am, do you have something? I don't have a prayer handy, but I can.
I, I approve give, you know, authorization to Erica Dibble to post for the public hearing, as soon as she knows when it is and when she sees fit.
On or before November 21st, 2025?
On or before November 21st, 2025.
And I'll support that.
No, she's making a motion.
Oh, I thought she already, he was making the motion, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to make the motion?
That was a motion.
That was a motion.
I was going to say, I thought that was a motion, and I supported it.
I thought she was writing it down, I'm sorry.
I have a motion, any more discussion?
Do we, just a question, Chairman, do we need that specific, I forgot, I know the advertisers included and website, was there any other mediums that we had used? I guess you would know that.
I would not know that, however, I can check this, I can ask Clayette, she, again, I know she's retired, but she does answer my questions here and there. I believe it's only our website as well as?
The local newspaper.
The local newspaper.
That should be included in the motion, so it's.
No question. Chairman, could you repeat that so she can write that down?
I got most of it.
Why don't you read what you have?
I just said.
Because his memory's not.
Yeah, his memory's not good.
She's going to read it.
Go ahead.
I just have to post the new meeting on or before November 21st. That's holiday. Okay, so move, move, move to approve the authorization of Erica Dibble to post the public hearing notice in the Tuscola County advertiser as well as the Tuscola County website on, or before November 21st, 2025.
Good job, Kim.
Okay, and we already got a second with all that stuff on there.
Yep, you just got to vote on it.
Do we need to, do, do they need to vote on the most, the updated motion?
Yeah, they need to know.
Let's, let's, well, let me, let's just re, well, it wasn't supported, was it?
I supported it.
Yeah, so it's not a change, you gotta, gotta get rid of that motion, this motion.
I didn't make it, I thought you were, you was.
I think you just have to agree to the change.
Yeah.
And I agree to the change.
You made the motion.
Yeah.
Read the motion one more time.
I'm still writing. She speaks way too fast.
I apologize. Move to approve the authorization, Erica Dibble to?
See?
Post the public hearing notice in the Tuscola County advertiser and Tuscola County
Okay, I have moved to approve, I'm, I'm sorry, moved to approve the authorization of Erica Dibble to post the public notice of hearing in the advertiser and in the Tuscola County website on November 21st, on or before 2025.
Correct, so the meeting is December 20, the public hearing is currently, what, plus we have to, we have to stick to that date, there's no other date. So the public hearing has to be December 22nd. So 30 days prior would be November 21st.
That's why you're confusing her, Eric.
I'm sorry. I want to make sure she's not putting in that I'm posting a meeting that is going to be on November 21st. The meeting is not on 21st.
It's going to be posted on or before November 21st.
That is correct.
For the public, yes, for the public hearing on December 22nd.
Correct.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that we were clear and that we were not saying that we're posting the same day that the meeting is.
You agree with the change?
I, I agree with that.
Correct. Okay.
And I agree with all them changes.
Any more discussion?
What changes were there?
Just kidding.
All fair say, aye? Motion approved.
Thank you.
Very.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You did fine.
In response to the resolution, just knew you had a letter there from the courts taking us through the zone.
The expungement.
Expungement, yeah, that's what it was, yep.
As we approve the reduction in fees or the removal of the fees?
Yeah.
For the expungement, and they're gracious, graciously thanking us because that helped with the success of their event, is my summary.
Yep. Move on to Commissioner Liaison Reporters. I have nothing to just tell reporters, it's time. Commissioner Barrows?
Yep, I did attend the county road commission meeting last week. And since our last meeting, I attended the Village of Gage Town meeting, Alpham Township meeting, and as a result of Alpham Township, I sat in yesterday, um, the Cassidy Area Ambulance Authority, Cassidy Area Ambulance Group meeting, which is composed of Evergreen Township, Freely, Novesta, Elmwood, and Alpham Township. They're affiliated with MMR, and they had a, a meeting which was very interesting. I toured the People's Building, went over and toured that with EAM, and magnificent building, and my question is, why don't we do our board meetings over there in that nice facility?
Well, we, we've talked about it, but I, like, so right here is, right here, people. Well, this is something we discussed about, we, we have.
Yeah, it's, it's a beautiful facility, and it's, you know, sometimes we're packed in here, and you don't have enough room for people to, to sit. That would be, that would be terrific. Planned on attending and touring Animal Control, when I got there, they were occupied, so I, I couldn't do that. This coming week, I'm, well, tonight I'm going to Alpham Township. Next week, there's the Road Commission Task Force meeting, as well as the, on, on the 20th, the meeting at the Brentwood that talks about the issues that they've encountered with safety. Not only in Tuscola County, but there are people coming from Huron and Sandlot Counties as well. When I went to the Cassidy ambulance meeting, the gentleman that was representative of MMR talked about the accident on Bridge Corner and Deckerville Road, and it was very interesting the number of people that responded to that. He had it in his report, there were three MMR ambulances. There was an ambulance from Aspire EMS, Central Huron, Send Us The EMS, MedStar helicopter was there, Flight Care, Carroll Fire Department, Kingston Fire Department, Gage Town Fire Department, Tuscola County Sheriff's Department, and the Kingston Police Department were all there. It was, it was, it was a horrific scene, and everybody pulled together and made it as good as, you know, as, as it could be. A lot of, a lot of people were helping. Next week, I've got a busy schedule as well, I'll be visiting Wisner Township, there's Parks and Recreation meeting, uh, Road Commission, Great Start Collaborative, Saginaw Bay Coastal Initiative, which I haven't attended yet, this is my first meeting in Bay City, and of course, the, the meeting at Brentwood, and that's all for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Barwell?
We just had the DVA EBSA, basically the market manager and one of the other things are looking for office space, not really report there, but I wanted to circle around in the economic development. We left off where, who was developing the agreement? We're going to review for?
That was me, Commissioner, and I have not completed it, my apologies.
All right, just, I have an update, that's all I have.
What's it?
I have nothing, sir.
Well, sir. Where's it going?
Yesterday, we had a 911 authority board meeting, it was an interesting conversation. We're not the only one in the area, I guess the state was 911 issues. So it was, this is a good conversation, we had a good meeting. That's all, sir.
Any other business, enough, sir. I would, let's just jump back for a minute, I'm very seriously about looking to get language for artists or for whoever about the road provision. I've been serious about that, it's a rather hard, I mean, if you want to do it, tighten your mouth to do it, because I know those people are frustrated, and I would like to look into that and start moving forward in that direction for that election.
That's what.
I was just going to comment, I only saw what I saw when I did the mission, what it takes to change, and it really didn't have to go to an election. Maybe we need some clarity on that, it was a public hearing, so people could provide input, and then, but it said nothing about an election.
It, it does say about elections.
Does it?
Yeah, it does, and so you have to, it has to be, go back to the people now.
Okay. Oh, oh, the fact that, you know, AI, EAM is not always dependable.
And you know, when I first looked into it, when I first got elected, it was years ago, but the townships were outboard, I mean, they were outboard, I, and I told them, the only way you get to those is to get the townships outboard, because they need to be outboard, but we need to do a little more research on that, make sure we have our next row, we'll follow what you just said, Commissioner Barwell, but I would like to move forward and start getting language put together with that, start doing the conversation about it.
And Jody said she had some information from before.
Well, that's why I said I'd like to.
We pulled this all that, two or three times, we were ready to do.
That's why I said I'd like to have it on the next meeting, that we can discuss this, maybe by that time we'll have some language or something.
Yeah, maybe if I could research anything, you know, to that direction. Okay, that's all I have, anybody else got any other business to say? Let's get the public cameras to come further aboard.
Good morning.
Morning.
How you doing, morning, Eric?
Good, good morning, Commissioners. I came to this meeting today because I was watching the October 30th meeting online, and I was interested to see what was happening with the MIDC budget. When I was listening earlier, I felt compelled to stay for public comment. First thing I wanted to say is thank you to Commissioner Barwell. I noticed at the October 30th meeting and at the today's meeting that you brought up the disparity between MIDC in my office and how the creation of the MIDC has severely impacted prosecutors' offices. So thank you for having us in mind. I wanted to give you an update on my office, but I also wanted to comment on something that was said earlier about that there really isn't disparity between our offices and that it's just as hard to find defense attorneys as it is to find prosecutors. That could not be farther from the truth. At the October 30th meeting, Jeffrey Stewart indicated that he currently has 13 roster attorneys, defense attorneys, that are defending all of the criminal cases in Tuscola County. That only includes? criminal cases in Tuscola County. That only includes the ones that are on the roster. That doesn't include any attorney that is retained to defend a criminal case. I have myself, my chief assistant, two assistant prosecutors, and a part-time assistant prosecutor. Four of us against 13 roster attorneys on a daily basis. And Mr. Stewart hopes to have up to 16 by the next two months, is what he indicated at the 30th meeting. MIDC in Tuscola County has a budget of $2.4 million. I have a budget of $1.1 million. There is a significant disparity between what is happening in prosecutors' offices and what is happening with the MIDC. I could resign tomorrow and go work for MIDC as a roster attorney and do nothing but misdemeanor cases and double my salary. All of my attorneys could resign tomorrow and go be roster attorneys for MIDC and likely triple their salaries. Now fortunately, I have excellent people in the office and I love my job and I'm not resigning any time soon. But it's a tough place to be right now. We are fairly short staffed. I was grateful to the board a year ago when I asked you all to give me another APA position. When I came in and I showed you the hours of overtime that my staff was working and that we needed another person to compensate for that overtime. In a year, I have not been able to fill that position, and I have tried. My best hope at filling that position is going to be in May of 2026, when an intern that I had this past summer graduates law school and she can come on as a law clerk and then hopefully pass the bar and be an APA. I'm not here to make a comment on anybody else's budget or ask you to approve or deny anybody else's motions for their budget. I just wanted to thank you for having us in the back of your mind and let you know that we are still struggling, but we are still doing our best to keep up with the cases. Thank you.
Is it just a money issue you think, characters or what?
I think the biggest issue is a money issue.
The biggest issue is.
But I also think that there is not a lot of people who want to do what we're doing anymore. When I was, I think I addressed this with the board before, when Mark Green hired me, I was one of 20 some applicants for that position. I haven't gotten a qualified applicant for a attorney position since I hired Bernard in, I believe, January. And before that, we hadn't got a qualified applicant for an attorney position in eight months. I've had a few applicants for the law clerk position that you guys granted me a couple months ago. I have been able to add on a law clerk. However, out of the, I think, six applications that I got, half of them didn't even meet the criteria. I had people who were applying who didn't have a Juris Doctorate degrees. Well, I'm not sure how you're going to be a law clerk if you don't have your JD. And the others had issues that made them not qualified to be in my office. I'm still actively seeking people who want to be in a rural community. I love being in a rural community. I don't want to go anywhere else. But the state has to step in. I mean, when you're talking a $2.4 million budget to a $1.1 million budget, the state has got to do something for prosecutors' offices. I would encourage everybody to contact your state reps or senators. We're, we're slowly dying in the prosecutor's office. And it's not just my office. I brought you guys before the list of prosecutors' offices that is, that are hiring or seeking applicants from the PM website. It's just as long today as it was then. I checked when I got here today. It's difficult. We're choosing between our families and our jobs on a daily basis, and it's taking its toll on all of us. So I hope, I hope there's a fix in the future. I don't know what's going to happen to prosecutors' offices, especially in rural communities, if there's not.
Chairman, I, I'm on the macro judicial. They have been talking about that very same thing, about they're pushing that towards legislatures that this is not fair, you know, and the state's going to have to step in and do something. But we'll see how far it goes. I mean, they're, at least they talk about it, and that's a start.
Right.
But it's not fair. That's why it's hard for me when he comes in and says, well, I got a $2.4 million, you know, budget. It's not right.
It's very difficult. And, and one thing to consider too is the number of cases that they process versus ours. So we process more cases just by virtue of processing all of the criminal cases. We're, they're only processing the ones that are with court-appointed attorneys, not retained attorneys. But also, every criminal complaint that comes into my office has to be reviewed, whether it's authorized or not. So all of the cases that we review and decide not to authorize charges on, that's an additional burden that we have that a defense bar or a defense, you know, council doesn't have. They never see those cases. They never come out of my office.
Chairman, Eric, as I recall, and maybe I'm wrong, but in terms of the state budget, I call it slap in the face, and it's true. The money was allocated to prosecutors' offices, but it was limited to Wayne, Oakland, the large one.
Calhoun.
Right.
Which is out of touch.
With reality.
Or intentional.
Yes.
One of the two. And that's not the first time. That's a really slap in the face to local government in the sense that they cannot not be aware of the situation, almost criminal. I mean, as you just said, it's eroding, and it's just a matter of time.
It is. Even the Attorney Journal's office isn't fully staffed right now. They have job postings online, too.
The state attorney general?
Yes.
Oh, that's surprising. I'd come to Tuscola.
Well, I like you, Luke.
We thank you for what you do, really do. It's appreciated.
I appreciate your support.
Pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah, there's still the public comment. Bardwell just the board this morning. Let the record show that we did have office public comment at the end. I'll have security. Give a speech to the board. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
The move by Commissioner Luke Spurbank, Commissioner Bardos, the adjournment committee meeting this morning. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is adjourned.
We have to stop story planning. We still have to stop story planning.
With that, I'll call it order to the statutory finance meeting this morning. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Barrios? Commissioner Bardwell?
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Here.
Commissioner Luke?
Here.
Commissioner Cook?
Here.
We have a call. We may proceed.
Thank you. Action on the previous minutes.
Make a motion on the action on the previous meeting minutes by October 30th, 2025. I'll support that.
The move by Commissioner Spurbank, to move action previous minutes, statutory, statutory finance, the 30th of October, 2025. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Move on to new business. Review and approval of finance report checks.
Chair, I make a motion, review and approval of the finance report and checks 11, 13, 25, finance docket.
Support. The move by Commissioner Cook, Spurbank, to review and approval of the finance project, 11, 13, 25, finance docket. Any more discussion? Here, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Review and approval of the daily report checks.
Chair, review and approve of the daily reports and checks 11, 13, 20, 25.
Support.
The move by Commissioner Luke Spurbank, Commissioner Barrios, the approval of the daily report checks 11, 13, 20, 25, on the daily docket. Any more discussion? Here, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion is approved.
I have one. You're so fast. I do have a comment.
I am, I am quick.
You look on page five or 12, and look under, yeah, page five. You see two items of $15,000 that you're paying. And the two attorneys are very good attorneys. It's just, to give you an example, a single practice.
Five of 21?
Five of 21.
Okay.
You look down at the $15,551, $8.60. This is somewhat what Erica was speaking about.
Got it. Right.
Nothing we can do, but it's just.
We see it all the time on here.
Yeah.
Yeah, you mentioned it's been there twice with different attorneys, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've made that comment before. They say, well, that's what they get. Well, that's a lot.
Hey, they, 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 yes.
The amount is set, the amount is set by the MIDC, how much they get per hour.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's a matter of they're getting paid too much.
Right.
It's a ma, I mean, because that's the system, but it's a matter of, there's got to be some quality.
Well, there's been some, we've got to go back on the way, but he said it's supposed to be $45,000, which looks weird. No, that's too much.
Right.
You know, we've had to do that a couple times.
How many hours are in the day there, you know?
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. We have no per diems this week. We have nothing on the old business. If anyone want to make public comment, I'll just statutory finance part of the meeting this morning. Statutory finance part of the meeting. Let the record show, I've heard that we had, we did offer, and they had no participants. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. I'll support it.
The move by Commissioner Luke Spurbank, to adjourn statutory finance part of the one. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.